Okay, we're starting a few minutes late. My apologies. It is six oh four PM. I'd like to call this meeting to order and begin with as soon as I can get the screen to change. I pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America.
Oh my God.
And before you say, I should have mentioned this, please let's take a moment to remember those who were before us. Thank you very much. Okay, roll call vote, please. Presence? Great, thank you. Just before I go through the announcements on the agenda, this is our first large in-person meeting where we're also doing this via Zoom. I'll be trying to manage the technology side of it as best as I can, but we're using this camera right here. For those of you who are at home, thank you. Please meet your microphone unless you'd like to speak up. You can certainly communicate by speaking up or by shooting a text message, especially when we get to the people to be heard section. So thank you. First announcement, and I wanted to show this right off the bat, state program provides financial assistance for low-income homeowners having trouble paying water and sewer bills due to the economic hard, economic impact of the pandemic. This is a program that's made possible through the New York State Office of Temporary and Disability Assistance to help with paying water and sewer bills. Board, we actually have on the agenda this this item. So when we get to that point, I can show you, and I'll just throw it up on the board for us to see here. This is going to be the vendor agreement, which would allow us to basically offer this program. Is there anything else you want to add to that, Andy?
Not right now, when we get to the agenda.
Okay. Great, thank you.
You are gracious.
Yes. Uh, let's see here. Upcoming village election reminders, petitions for the upcoming election need to be in by Thursday, February 3rd, three thirty PM, because that's Close of Business Day for us at the office. We have three two-year trustee seats and a single one-year trustee seat available in the next election, as well as a village justice position that would be a four-year term. All right. I wanted to start with appointments for a minute, and I'm just basically going to state what I have on the agenda. So if anybody has, they can follow along. Beginning right now at six PM on Tuesday, January 11th, I will be appointing, I'm going to appoint, I guess I'm appointing, I'll put in the present tense, Officer Paul Alexonis as the new officer in charge for the Village of Hudson Falls Police Department. Officer Alexonis has been with the police department since, is it ninety-five? Thought I got that right, and has been OIC many times when the chief has been on vacation. He's in a position to work several shifts, and I am looking forward to having him as the officer in charge. As you guys know, Officer Bernie Davic was appointed initially officer in charge on December sixteenth, twenty twenty-one. He will become the second in command in the command structure. Officer Davic has done a tremendous job stepping in during a very tricky time of transition. We are very grateful for your dedication and willingness to take on the responsibility that you took on and that you are now going to be taking on, on Paul. So thank you guys very much. And these appointments, in my mind, will remain in place during the suspension of Chief Ash, no matter how long that takes. I've gotten a lot of comments from residents who are concerned about making sure the police department stays in this stable. I've had a lot of officers step up and cover extra shifts, shifts as needed. Not just this, but we've had some, some COVID situations as well. So it's been a very tricky time. So Officer Davic, thank you for everything you have done. And Officer Alexonis, now officially officer in charge, thank you very much for taking this on. All right, I have a few updates I want to go through. Trustees, the first one, we've had some serious copy machine issues. Our main one died a couple of months back. And we had gotten, I had found a free replacement on Facebook Marketplace that Neil was gracious enough to pick up, and thank God we did. Because when that one died, we switched to this one, which has been okay-ish. But now we're having problems where, how many times a day do you have to shake the tone? Two, yeah, it's pretty urgent. We have a smaller machine that is mainly used for Judy when she's doing envelope printing. But it's been our backup machine. I've been having problems making copies on that because when it runs it across the glass, it doesn't do it evenly. So some lines look larger and some lines it's smaller and it's kind of comical. So we do have on the agenda tonight some purchase, mainly purchase options, because we talked their purchasing and leasing. And we decided that purchasing would make more sense. And when we get to that part of the meeting, I have those quotes and items to put up on the screen. Number two, Hudson River Greenway North Trailhead. This is another grant that's been going on. A while back, we put out a bid, which we heard back from lots of local contractors. That was an exceedingly large bid package. It was like a couple hundred pages of stuff. So nobody sent in the bids. So what we're going to be doing later is looking for permission again to put out a bid, and it would be on the schedule of the bids being backed by February first, so that they can be reviewed prior to the February eighth meeting, which would give BNL a chance to look over things, give the rec contradictions.
No. No.
Just as a reminder, we're hearing some folks from home. If you can meet your microphone, that's, that's great. Until we get to that, those portions, thanks. All right, mayor update number three, we have made some progress on the Woodsbrook demolition, and again, Mark has been doing an exceedingly huge amount over the past month, as well as the village office, as well as Andy. So as well as Neil and the DPW guys. So thank you. I don't know if you can see this, but this is, let me move this out of the way for just a moment for people here. This is now the side of one fourteen Church Street, because the smaller building, one hundred to one oh eight Church Street, is down. It was cosmetically connected, not structurally connected to the building. That's down, and I think, did they finish the filling process? Okay. Okay. So that's, that's a big step forward. We now have one fifteen Main Street down, seven Hall Street down. Three is, I think the structure is down, but they didn't seem to work. Okay. And we got the waiver from DOL to continue as a controlled demolition. The next ones on the schedule are five Hall Street and twenty-seven Elm Street. So that's kind of the near future on that. I will say that, you know, we're still many steps away from what's going to happen to this, to these properties. Once we acquire them, we do have additional funding from the state, and the state has a contractor who's already started to meet with you guys on what's next, what are the possibilities for here. This is a spot that I've said before, and I'm going to continue to say would be a great spot for a village parking lot, right near a couple important locations. It'd be just another nice spot on this side of the village to have a little bit of extra parking. I think parking is something we could do with that land. I know they're, they're very specific on things we can and can't do. But in my mind, just as a planting a seed, but we're still a long time away from making that decision, and that's going to be a decision made by many, many folks. See here. As we continue to work on getting internet and phone service at the water treatment plant, we originally had an agreement with Spectrum to do an install at the water treatment plant, but there needed to be some modifications to the plan. A static IP address had to be added in the phone line, so they needed us to sign the agreement again. I have that agreement ready to go. I just need permission from the board to sign that. So that's also on the agenda, and we can talk about that when that comes up. And finally, we have the carbon, another carbon change out coming for the GAC filter, and that is scheduled to start on January eighteenth, which is a Tuesday. And that's important because it's like a two-day process for change out and another couple, two days. So if it goes any longer than that, then it means our guys have worked on the weekend, and we're just doing our absolute best to avoid that. Trustees, any questions? Okay, great. Okay, we are the people to be heard section. When called upon, please start with your full name and street address. Please share or speak to what you would like to discuss to. The mayor will see how many are here in person and virtually who would like to speak, and then I'll set a time limit to speak, so it's a manageable time. And just as a reminder, as I've already mentioned before, this is on Zoom. It's being recorded. We their audio or audio and video record all of our meetings, and they'll eventually put them up on YouTube. So you have that. Can I have an idea of how many people either at home? Let me put this on my screen so I can see things. I see Marion at home. Anybody else virtually will want to speak up on anything? And then in person, how many would like to speak? Okay. What's that? We don't have anything definitive to act on, but if you want to share any concerns or thoughts on parking, that's totally fine. Um, we don't have it on the agenda tonight, something we're looking to review prior to the February meeting. But if you want to speak to that with your concerns, that's totally fine. Okay. So no need to speak? Okay. In that case, I'll set the limit at five minutes is fine. And I guess we'll go in person first. So Marion, if you could meet for just a moment. You wanted to go, take it away. Thank you.
I work on several matters and chiefs, and I owe my dedicated or my decorated law enforcement peers additional ability for dumps are not approved. Today's meeting, I'll be having majority of the police officers that are employed in this village and not as the son of the chief. The current manager is two currently salsa and may adjudicate him regarding the chief. And if that's known, the accusation will show that there's no bearing or base in it. We're going to know the chief to know his parents, passion, and fair manner. One who takes great pride in his department and buildings. I'm sure several people in this room personally know his cell phone number, and he can call him any hour of any time at any time. In fact, majority of people that deal with the cops know that they rely on that chief. Which falls a small, tight-knit community, and this type of police should be considered a core stone in every small community, and it ensures that no matter what your position, it's at the highest level, that you should be accessible to everyone. The concern I have, correct, for Mayor Allen, is several of his concerns or issues that he's aware and aware of and has yet to deal with it, and I feel the door from public media. The police department contains camera systems that are used for documenting interviews with suspects, victims, informants, and documentation evidence. Any non-law enforcement access to these cameras violates policy and greatly jeopardizes the continuity of evidence, as well as violation of certain privacy that victims and suspects both have. This adversely affects permanent cases and open the village to liability. I have handed you all a copy of a letter dated December sixth, fourteen, which is addressed to Mayor Harvey Heiner. To date, the mayor has not addressed the issue and still continues to act as a part of care. And her forensic attorney has also issued a letter to the American Department. Mayor Allen should put an ear to the issues, also John Hudson, and that in regards to the past, that greatly jeopardizes the integrity of this department. The mayor accepts the sole responsibility for dealing with the issue, and he's yet to done anything that this is dominating. I have a hash copy of the letter in regards to John Hudson, and the mayor also has a copy of it. The giddy old letter on file is on file with the GAT office. And any case that arrives at your door, the prosecutor, the letter has to be turned over to the district. In some instance, John Hudson was found to lie in a courtroom and resigned instead of being fired. Officer Hudson, also in presence at the county rescue squad, has given subject multiple complaints to you, Mr. Mayor, of conducting county rescue squad business while being paged by the Village of Hudson Falls Police Department, as well as sleeping in the rescue squad while working police. Recently, Officer Hudson has trained a new officer in the village, which we are currently dealing with for excitement.
Justin, I'm sorry to interrupt, and I will, I will give you your time back. You stated you're an officer of the police department here in the village. Is it? Very appropriate to distribute those letters.
Yes, and I will have to do it. Officer Hudson stood upon himself to mitigate the village and respond to the bar inquiry, as I said. And no time was offered for Hudson requesting, and per policy, to respond outside the village, even though it was predicted by supervisor or requested by nine one one. The justification made by Bernie Davic is that the officer, the new officer, had never seen a bar inquiry before. The next time he's shooting a homicide scene, will convince the city to draw, should the village be even to their extension of seeing a homicide scene or transfer to made up in the new investigation of that, of providing further documentation, photos, etc. I think this to be a tax-paying village resident, need police, and they're not needing, because they're not there. The appointment of Bernie Davic raises great concern. I think, Mayor, you've done a great job with stepping up and making Paul Alexonis, the new acting officer in charge, a well-staying member of this community. I stand by him, and I work side by side with him daily.
Justin, I'm sorry.
Bernie Davic has been in charge of this village for two days since I began my career.
Justin Ash, I am asking you to stop for a moment, because I am not going to stand, you have given me a letter before. I appreciate that. I am not.
My five minutes is not on there.
I am not, I am asking you not. Excuse me, I am asking not to disparage another police officer locally. I am the chief executive officer. I am saying right now that your time is up. I have received your letter, and if you do not stop, I will be asking all police to leave. Justin, I am asking you to stop. If you do not stop, I will be asking an officer to escort him out. You are out of order for the meetings. I am not going to have.
You're very filling open shift. Are you wearing through ninety open shift?
Officer Alexonis. I'm sorry, I would naturally do this, but I have to stop.
They work for many, 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 many police departments in this area. They do it because they love this village, and they love what they do, and they do it for the right reasons.
There is three officers.
Your actions as mayor bring the effect, the morale and well-being of each of these officers. You failed to meet and failed to do your job, which you took it over to do.
You're out of line.
You have opened the village up to liability and failed the people of this great village. In regards to my concern, I leave you with work to do, President Roosevelt. In any moment of decision, the best thing to do is right for it. The next best thing is the wrong thing, and the worst thing to do is nothing. Mayor, do the right thing and step down. Thank you for this time. You guys need a little help. I'm sorry. I'm up here all the time, up in our practice investigation without time. Thank you.
Neil?
Shut that up. I'm not sure what I said again. I have never, I have never been able to charge anywhere in the entire area. You can check this paper. You follow, and I'll be impressed with my career regardless of your background. Thank you very much.
I'm going to speak simply for people who want to hear a few comments. In no way will I be publicly commenting on personnel matters. I would simply ask that due diligence be done. Not to just play off of viral videos, but to actually take a couple moments to figure out what is going on, what is being spoken to, what is being accused, and what is not. I do have some problems with an officer who says that he works here. Coming here to disparage other officers in the public media. It'll pull down, okay. I have no problem with anyone commenting, sharing opinions, popular or unpopular, that I totally agree with or that I totally don't. That has always been how I run things. That is always how I run things. Even if that makes me the most or least popular person, that's not what I'm doing. Suffice to say, I will be reviewing the letters as I think involved. And I will speak to the board as needed, with any concerns they have. But personnel matters cannot be discussed publicly. And apart from that, I don't have anything else to say. Very disappointing that the first person is the one to move from the meeting. Is what it is. All right. Hi, Marion.
Hello, how are you?
I'm all good.
First, we'd like to say thank you for the Zoom. We feel a lot safer with it, with our numbers going up here in the village and Rensselaer County. So thank you. Can you hear me?
Yep, you are welcome.
And then I am here to bring up, has your, have you started your budget process?
Not much, no. Started discussions, but nothing formally yet.
All right, again, a reminder about brush removal being done in our village. I know I had brought that up at a meeting, because it does become a hardship for people that do not have trucks and things like that.
If they can become a line item.
If they can become a line item as part of the responsibility of the road crew.
Marion, can you say the last thing one more time about brush?
We had talked, I believe it was in October, we had come down, and I brought you pictures, a brush removal that we felt should be a line item in your budget now due to the hardship it is for people to get it to the dump or down to the waterworks. And I wanted that considered in the budget.
Got it. Thank you, Marion. Anything else?
And then Harold also wanted to know what was the progress on the clearing of sidewalk, clearing of snow on sidewalks in the winter.
In terms of law and policy, we have nothing to, hold on a minute.
Can you hear me better now?
Yes, I can.
All right, we have nothing new in terms of law or policy. Just because we ran into so many legal snafus and concerns when we were trying to put together something to codify into law. So at this point, we're still doing what we've been doing. As we look to budget, we've had discussions about possibly getting more equipment, possibly more staffing, and that's all going to factor into budget discussions.
Okay, well, even if we get an emergency brush removal when storms happen, that would be a beginning step.
I'm sorry, say that one more time?
Even if we could get something in the budget for when the storms happen and there's damage, if brush could be removed, that would be a beginning step for the village.
Got it. Is that it?
Yes, it is. Thank you.
All right. Anyone else? All right, in that case, we will continue on. Reports, trustees, you have all copied their parts? I, of course, left my hard copy at home. I have some digital copy. Can I have a hard copy? Anything you guys want to note on the treasurer's report? I think we do have village treasurer on. Hi, village treasurer Denise.
Hi there.
Anything you want to highlight or trustees, anything you want to ask Denise?
Hey there. Thank you, guys, for all of your nice and kind words and thoughts and whatnot these past few weeks. I appreciate it, and hopefully things will be back on track soon for me.
I don't know if you can hear, but tons of great support and love for you.
Thank you, appreciated.
Unless you guys have any other questions, I'm looking for a motion to approve the treasurer's reports. All right, that was Dev and Bobby D. All in favor? Opposed or abstentions? All right, Carrie's. Police reports.
One hundred and twenty-nine, when we're handled by Hudson Falls. Unfortunately, due to staffing charges, we had three handled by the sheriff's department and two handled by the state police. That was due to some officers being out on medical leave and went throughout on military leave, wound up with some open shifts. Overall, not too bad. For the month, we had two abandoned vehicle complaints, four animal complaints, six fire complaints, thirty-six EMS calls, one burglar alarm. Court details, coastal interference of one, debris in the roadway, thirteen disturbance calls, six domestic one drug complaint, one dumping complaint, one execution of a drug warrant, a flight, three fraud calls, one harassment, twenty investigations, two arsonies, one lockout, one parking complaint, one property damage accident, three property disputes, nine public assists, two suspicious vehicles, three sex offenders that re-registered, one trespass complaint, five welfare checks, and two nine-one-nine calls. Also, in the same time period, the village patrol did assist outside the village thirteen times in the last month with the sheriff, farm, state police. There was a fire call, three EMS calls, five burglar alarms, two investigations of stolen vehicle, a property damage accident, and a property check. That was total one hundred and forty-two responses for the village patrol. And just for a comparison, since I had a chance to take a look at the numbers in the town for the same period, there was only forty-nine calls. Twenty-eight were handled by the sheriff's department, twenty-one by the state police. Just to give you an idea of the call volume difference between the village and the town. On top of the calls, I would talk to the DUI coordinator for the county, so the new South DUI contract is to have some signed. In regards to that, there's also a letter of liability that you guys probably familiar with every year. And he said they'll be paying cash claims. I'm not sure what claims we have in, but he said there are some cash claims that haven't been paid. They'll be taking care of that. If anybody's been in the police station, you've seen some changes in there. There's a movement going around. Some of the silent cabinets had to be changed, and some of the rooms had to be changed in anticipation of the bathroom reconstruction that's going to happen. We're going to lose some space out there. We have to move some things around. Five zero four is going to the Ford garage for warranty work, and there's an oil leak on it. Possibly it's a filter-related thing. Apparently it's come loose a couple times, and it was leaking again, so it's going down. Officer Warner is going to graduate the police academy January twenty-sixth. And got a few more shifts left to do for his, for his ride-along time. He's coming along good. Officer Murphy is another new guy. He's worked Saturday with Silvernell, and he's doing pretty good. Got his feet, jumped right in. We do have Officer Ryan Ash and Mark come around on military service, and they're gone for the month doing training, so I just want to thank them for their time and the service to the country. They said they will be back next month. Be back on the schedule. And Officer Swanson and Schmitty are both here tonight. They did a twenty-four-hour course for Russellizer certification last week. For the year, and just for a comparison, the calls for the year two thousand and eighteen were thirteen hundred and seventeen calls, two thousand and nineteen were sixteen hundred and two, two thousand and twenty was fourteen hundred and eighty-eight, and unfortunately, I didn't have a chance to get this year's numbers, because the month is half last month as well. The arrests are more telling, though. If you look at two thousand and eighteen, one hundred and sixty-four arrests, two thousand and nineteen, there's one hundred and fifty-three arrests. With the installation of battery form, two thousand and twenty showed eighty-nine arrests, and two thousand and twenty-one was seventy-three. The current vehicle mileage right now is five zero two, the new vehicle, is one thousand nine hundred and sixty-two miles. In the meantime, the other three vehicles are about the same. Five zero four is at sixty-six thousand four hundred and six, five zero three is at eighty-three thousand five hundred and twenty-four, and five zero five is at seventy-seven thousand two hundred and twenty-eight. So nothing to do right now with that, but it's obviously going to be a concern. In the next year, we're going to have three vehicles the same mileage. They're going to reach their end of life. Any questions? Any questions?
Thank you for taking over.
Sure.
So, so that that was interesting and I know we spoke about this and we- A few things have happened over the past month on Facebook and my name, I see that we dropped a little bit here. Um the one was specific to a particular dog in a particular location and, I mean, what do we discover?
We looked up that area and there's been no complaints on the one that's on Facebook recently with the dog. It's gotten no complaints on it. I I'm not sure if Nancy did, but she's usually pretty good at following up. I'm sure she knows where the owners are and has made phone calls, but there's been no complaints to the police partner for the village particularly.
There was a case that went to court, but I don't know if that was in the village.
It was in the village. That was last year.
Yeah.
Yeah, so that was, you know, in regards to the same thing, but-
But the takeaway that we need to tell people is, if you, if they have an issue or complaint, they should call the police. So that it gets reported as an incident because that gives us the paperwork and, you know, oh, well, this is the third time this dog has been called on us, the fourth time. And that helps us and that also in turn helps um the dog and the court.
Right.
Yep. Yes. Yes.
I would just get a question that's not on me.
Sure.
That's the way we get people. I don't I don't know what one of us wants to talk about. We just follow, but I worry about people that get this call and then initially smell like, and wonder if people you guys could, or little passion, maybe so, we need to have stuff.
Yeah, usually House does do that and they, you know, there are available twenty-four hours for us. That's something that's keep asked, so that's that's been a good program so far and it's worked out well for the families that have used it.
Okay.
Um Haka also does some things for people that need to go someplace for the night if there's no heat. But uh I'm not sure how active Haka is anymore.
Oh, okay. We talked to Jocko. A lot of people.
Right, right. That they had in the past, so I'm sure they would again. I I don't, we haven't had that issue yet this year, so I don't know how, you know, the priest isn't here full-time anymore, so it's, you know, context is different, but I'm sure that the deep into the church or, you know, either way, we'd be able to go through Haka and find something if that comes up.
Thank you.
Anything else? All right, the promotion to group, please help yourself. Thank you. Need a second? All right, Bobby and Dev all in favor? I oppose their sentence. Great. Carrie's. Moving on to the court of course and of course.
But uh you guys have my information in the reports and I have any questions. I covered so much more. But uh with your project, I would do a few. I'm always able to do this in the wrong. Doesn't always go well. Uh so with the project, you know, go on, this village should have more. And you know, if you get into it, or any questions you like that? Like I say, it's the first time here that this is uh on the inspection of the super. A lot of things to be inspected. Are they at four cases? Yes, they're under four cases. Yes. Over newer cases, uh definitely not relying to, you know, I have a process. I start off with weather, reminding them, send buying them questions too. And buying them questions, some people, they should want to pre-. Other two years with COVID. So I send the weather and I send the fifth day, the sixth violation. The seventh day, second violation. The eighth day, ninth day. And in cases of a ground court, the opportunity that pops up and that you never shot them. Uh on the eighteen, something certain time. So once we're in a special time, so, so. Um trying to deal with that. When we go to court, uh I'm probably the judge will uh work with him, uh he will uh work with us to motivate people to get the inspection done. Doesn't like this. Well, if I can add, we have a press upon the court, the court authority under our local laws. They have a position of monetary penalty for the point of being in court on appearance. The court under the position, our court paragons get lots of compliance, but if we are in the court, we've impressed upon the court, the court leaves and we're on the law, she'll go to my. Then on that, which uh lots of work after a month, two to three months, and then the court should allow it to continue for another couple of months and then the ground team will translate. So. Oh yeah, I think I mean, that's a big one sometimes. But usually he can't tell that I'm like, you know, which is all I've been doing the whole time is trying to get a client. Just trying to find. Not what it is, the report. Yeah, I guess I guess I'm a little bit disappointed now, partly only in fact that an Andy doing a great artist trying to point out, we have a structure set up in the class. And when we get to that point, I just explained to you, I've already gone to the bottom. You know, I'm a kind of civil, you know, the judge. Yeah, they love the authority as far as I'm concerned. Or so that, you know, for the bird, I don't want to have it. I can say the bird is out, that there are some. They especially. Pick them up. Catch it out. No. No, because I can't even get through water.
If you need assistance with that, please, be up to me. I know a lot of things are going on, but I know that's also been there.
Yeah, I'm exactly, I'm exactly that. Yeah. You're too beautiful in my job.
That's all right. That's all right. Fine.
And anytime you guys have a question or something, I have a bathroom just me uh this morning. If you may, I'll question.
Okay. Great, and looking for a motion to group, thank you. Need a second? Thank you guys for this one. All in favor? Proving, opposed, or赞成? Vote for enforcement, of course. Thank you. Uh move on to court deputy court, of course. Anything you want to highlight?
This basically, uh December bills um went out. They were coming in, they were practically came in. They make a lot of copies for the CFOA couple. And by the end of June, January twenty-fourth, till the twenty-fifteen, till we go over the property check. There's a lot to be paid for things like that. What you think of the amount?
Standing. And I actually forgot to mention, I'll I'll finish this up and mention it. Anything you guys want to mention? Or Ospel?
Post your procedure.
Deputy post your procedure in. But working out. And that's the way it's happening.
Any other questions? Looking for motion to approve the court deputy court report?
I'll do it.
All right, thank you Bobby and Bob. And there, so, um all fair?
All right.
All right, opposed or赞成? All right, Carrie's. Highway department reports. Bobby, anything you want to, uh? One else? Neil, anything you want to say else? Well?
Um, but she was, yeah, for normal aspects. Yeah. The one thing, the dog park, uh Dev and I met this afternoon. We found the resolution of the uh quickly, the rules and regulations. So we're sending that to you tomorrow and I don't know if I can make sense of it.
I feel like I can get that, but we don't.
And Dev, I did get that, so if you want me to throw that up on the screen at some point, I can do that. Yeah, I'm just gonna, in the folder right now. Okay. Um, do you want to shoot that right now? Just one second. When you break this show up in the folder there. I don't know if people at home will see this, but I'm gonna throw it over here. And I'm going to zoom in. Try and zoom on this. There we go. Do you guys read that or you want a little? One closer? Nope, I'm like, apparently I need to zoom. What's that? I was looking, I ended up having a conversation with a friend about another dog park and I saw that um she said there's a really good one in the Saratoga area and if you go to the website, they have this beautiful sign that looks very similar in fact to this. Beautiful. I'd love to figure out where that sign was made.
Well, they say it had two signs. They had one that was very flat and I was thinking of the other one. The other one was much stankier, I mean, it was way more stankier.
More not the part of the lab.
Yeah, it's like hard, I know it's a really false one. It's hard and it's really hard. It's a weird situation right now.
All right, well, this is, this is good progress. And I'm assuming we'll, we'll have some more discussions on it and bounce feeling for anything to handle that.
Yeah, yeah.
But we like to give it, we like to be this, we're being a sign that like me and I would that's what you can create something which this is making on a separate sign, so we don't have to wait for the sign to do.
Okay, it's gonna be a sign. And it should be officially approved policy and that's important to sign up or just put the sign up and we're okay?
But no, the board should approve the regulation of the dog park and then give it a temporary sign.
Okay. Do you want to review this or do you want, we can wait until we get to the court deputy reports. Um but if that's the case, if you guys have a phone, I can email this to your master and have it.
Pretty much what we talked about last time.
Okay, okay.
One thing I do want to think from all of this.
All right. Uh great, so we were doing highway uh report. Have we approved that? Okay, any other questions? Comments? Thank you Neil. Uh looking for motion to approve the highway report? Thank you. Thank you all. All in favor? Opposed or赞成? Carrie's, great, thank you. Your report. Anything you guys want to highlight or ask about? I know, I'm trying to do a lot of the normal stuff we do this season. Not just put his own place, helping with the snow and they got to play with the new backdrop and do a good time, I hear. The people who get excited about playing with the backdrop. Love it, love it. Um in fact, somebody I was thinking about, I would love to, I'd love you guys to keep a list of all the times you end up using that. Um so I I think it would be good to see how often we use that. People who, a lot of us into how and you guys work together, what kind of projects, use that sort of thing. And then speak to if there were any issues in the future. Well, here's the need, we can show you right here and throw in the paper. So just throwing that out there. Uh any other questions on your department report? Not looking for motion to group? And Dev? And do you have any comments? Uh all in favor? I oppose their sentence. Uh Carrie's. Water reports. I know Craig is normally how like, I think he is a few miles away from us right now. What's that? I'm sure he is. Um the couple of things I would point out is um this is the water meter really enforced with bills. Um we've had more issues with the boiler that is in the gas portion of the water treatment plant. Um and it's been a lot of the same problems, so that's kind of continuing to be a sticking point. I think that's over, I still don't know about that, but it's kind of one of those things that we just have sitting up that we're trying to get that taken care of, so. Otherwise, that's it. Um unless you guys have questions, I'll pick the motion to group or the court report. Thank you Bobby. Uh all fair? All right, opposed or赞成? No? All right, Carrie's great. Thank you. Uh Mick, my apologies on this because all we have up for tonight is the December fourteenth of regular meetings. I did not get the sixteenth or thirtieth special meeting minutes out for a certain brief, but I've gotten that for you. So we will postpone those uh to the next meeting. My apologies. Um any questions or comments on the December fourteenth minutes? Thank you. All right, further discussion? Hearing that all in favor? Opposed or赞成? All right. Units approved. Trustee committee reports. We'll start at the end, Kevin, and work our way down. Except lots of good advertising to teach you things that please. Thank you. Loving it. All right, Bobby Deckers?
Uh let's see, I have a little discussion here. Kind of talk about PR department, we have a lot of time to decide, so we really gotta talk. Take our time. Here we go, it's gonna be a good problem. Once we can. And we get a second round, it's spring. Right there.
Denise, can you hear any of that? Anywhere else?
Answered, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Yes, I can.
My email as well. We all must have made proposals, ideas, anything we could start to look at a group. The topics are in work. So.
Sorry Denise, we're just trying to get verification on the second payment if an Andy confirms it this spring.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
I'm having a hard time hearing everybody else.
Uh yeah, that's the microphone. I have to switch to the larger microphone.
Which is worse quality. Can you hear things now?
Yeah, it's better. Yeah.
Okay, I'll stick with this mic then. Um basically just ARPA funds, um taking our time moving, um making sure we do it right, but getting ideas in so we can continue moving and notice, notice things out to people as here's what our plans are, we want to hear from you, um and so on and so forth.
Yeah, um you know, we definitely need some new equipment in the office. Uh the postage machine, the copier, probably updated computers that would definitely be within the realm of ARPA funding. They would be okayed. Uh and my biggest thing is to, as the treasurer, pay down as much debt as we can to alleviate the burden on the taxpayers. But you know, there's lots of great ideas, so I'm sure that we can allocate certain percentages to different, you know, um you don't want to call them departments, but lots of ideas and we can, we can be creative with how we want to allocate the funds. And we do have a second round of com- of funds coming next year. Uh but we do have a lot of debt for a small village, so my concern is trying to alleviate, you know, the burden on the taxpayers. So that's my, that's my utmost, you know, wishlist, but there's lots of other good ideas out there, so.
Good thing, considering we had time, because I think we need to, we all had to do a lot of research and all paying down that because there's a lot of rules and we're gonna- Yeah, if I could jump in, there are a lot of rules and just so the board's aware. So last year, there had been what was called the interim final rule. And that was kind of out there for comments and the comments came in. But they were flooded with comments about how difficult the program is to decipher, what is allowable, what's not, and how you go about doing it. And all the record keeping and the recording requirements. The proposed, not the proposed, the files have just been published within the last handful of days. Uh the treasury department has come out with some documents providing an overview of what will be allowed. Some of these rules have changed. You should be aware of that, or one particular, if you're aware. Um but you're right Bobby, the timing is, projects have to be identified by a certain date, but not a certain, right? By twenty-four and the money spent by twenty-six. There is still an extended period of time and maybe a judge would say we want to spend the money. But I think it is appropriate approach to say, well, let's fully consider this. And then then we identify things, are they appropriate users or allowable? And then, then we identify things. Are they appropriate users or allowable? So the final rule is still being deciphered. I know the New York Conference of Mayor, Knighton, came out with some guidance or at least some memos explaining this. There should be more forthcoming based on the final rule just public. So when I say public, we, we just literally within the last couple of days. The biggest change that was made thus far that we reviewed is you recall that the law, or at least the rule that provided a calculation to determine whether the municipality has incurred any lost revenue that could be tied to impact from the, from the, from the pandemic. It was a very difficult calculation. Because of the number of comments received, the Treasury Department has now said you, you can take what is basically the standard allowance in municipalities. Think of it this way. When you do your taxes, you can itemize the deductions or you can take the standard deduction. What the Treasury Department has done with the ARPA is to say you can still do your calculation. Or you can take the standard allowance. The standard allowance is ten million dollars per municipality. Which means you can take certain monies, use the standard allowance amount and move those monies into your general fund for general municipal service. And so there is some flexibility that's been provided. The second caveat I'll give you is the rule continues to say, and Denise, you should hear this. In general, you can't use the ARPA funds simply to pay down existing municipal debt. Nor can you put it into a reserve fund as a return account. But what Knighton has said, and I would refer on this, is if the debt was incurred after the effective date, which was March of twenty-one, and it was for a project which would otherwise be an allowable project through the ARPA program, then you should be able to use the ARPA funds for that particular debt. If this is ultimately a pursuit of the board wants to make and paying down debt, we'll put this drill down on that. But you got two things going on here. One, you've got allowable projects. And the other one, the general rule that says you can't use the money that paid down existing debt. The, the, the gray area in between is, like this village has done, paying down debt post-March twenty-one to finance what would be an otherwise appropriate project to use ARPA funds is that debt allowable to pay. And I can tell you Knighton, at least on the interim fund, will thought that you need appropriate expenditure, but we'll drill that down on that.
We have a management.
Correct. It could, it could. Well, if it's a debt, it tells you, you've approved the line of course. So it's, it's already an existing debt. Uh, I think they're really banned in place for it, you know, the long-term property. So I, I do think it's an existing debt plan for a project that otherwise meets the criteria because of improving applicable expenditure.
And it leaves the end of the draft, maybe in the end of the law is probably.
And, and, and listen, now under, as we leave, the final rule is taking the standard allowance and putting it into general revenue funds for general services, that includes environmental radiation. That's a part of the cell and I, I don't know, not to be conjunction with the, the state council. So there are ways to get there and there are certain categories under the final rule. But the first and foremost, through the term with the board, it's supposed to be that runs the general.
We kind of prepared this one.
Yeah. And, and to speak with something that Denise mentioned, uh, the office computers, they haven't been replaced since, uh, I have been mayor, so this is year five of being mayor, so that's at least year five that we've been on these computers. I don't remember, I don't remember if anyone knows when we got them last, but they are very old. Um, I was hoping that we could make it to the next fiscal year because last year we budgeted all the new server um, and some improvements within the infrastructure of, of the technology. I was hoping we could make it uh, until this fiscal year, um, to get those, uh, new computers in the next budget. Uh, but once we made the improvements in the server and they added some additional network security, that really bobbled down the computers in the system. And I think, I know my own computer, which was actually a computer I got from, uh, my father, which donated those to use for mayor work. Um, it, it's basically not working. So whenever I'm at the office, most of the time on, on the laptop. Uh, I don't know how your computers are. They're, they're they're very slow. It's at the point where product, productivity is definitely being, uh, uh, an issue. So I've, I've started to look at possibly finding some computers to replace all of them. Mark, how is yours? Is yours doing what it needs to be doing? Okay. Um, but I know we would definitely need a new computer for, primarily for the three office staffs. Mine is not as pressing because I have this, but in terms of like, what would have an immediate help would be getting new computers for them and then getting uh, our group to come in and, and set them up, move all the files over and so on and so forth.
The most
Yeah. Yep. So we may.
It's me.
Yeah. Yeah. Yep. Are they working? Are they doing what you guys need them to do? Okay. Yeah, I mean, I mean, you know, I've heard from the office staff because I'm in there. I haven't heard anything directly from you guys or from the court. But look, this is our infrastructure. We got to support this. We got to make sure that they can do what they need to do. Um, in my mind, if I went to a, you know, computer service and said, hey, we need to buy five, six, seven office computers, they're probably going to be putting in stuff that's too high and costs like, you know, a grand each, which you don't need to do. We don't need monitors. We don't need devices. We just need new towers. We need to, new towers that have, you know, strong enough processors, enough RAM. I don't think anybody in particular, maybe the police would need uh, disk space if, you know, we got to the point where we had recording to need to do that, but I figured in a situation like that, that's where it would be more specialized. Then we would go to a vendor or handles, that sort of thing, can give us recommendations on. Well, if you're recording this many things from this many cameras, you're going to need this much space, that sort of thing. But for just the office staff, and we could probably, you know, for five hundred dollars, get a exceedingly huge improvement, uh, for each of the towers, five hundred each. I'm just sort of starting to look and get to my ideas out there. What's, uh, what's up? No, we don't need to spend.
No, 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 no. No, we're not talking.
The other expense would be making sure that we would budget for time for tech support to come in and do all the moves to make sure everything's good. In my mind, that would actually probably be a little bit bigger of an expense, but again, totally worth it. So, uh, if you have any, um, if you start to talk to officers and say, yeah, we could use some new computers, please pass that my way. And if you could reach out to Paulie and see how they're doing with their tech. Because they are on our network, so that has been working as far as I can tell. Um, but, uh, if, if their computers are off shape. No, no, I'm sorry. That, that's all provided by the court. All their stuff, so that, so we don't have to worry about that side of it. Yeah. Uh, and I'm sorry, Bobby, we kind of went on into ARPA, but that's fine. Any else?
No. Just stay, uh, let's stay kind of there.
Yep, great, thank you. Yes. Alright, Deb?
Um, just, uh, thinking about the website, um, thinking about emails and, uh, any ideas out there? On a day where we can find our time and remember the last time we talked about having a maybe, I think we also have, just so people can send in now.
Yep. When we notice out to the public on, we're looking for suggestions, we'll make sure that the email address is set before we do that.
Okay, um, so, that way we can, you know, go to Facebook, uh, honestly, but, um, that I'm on the way, but they pointed out last time, it's been, you know, it's been years, but years. So, I think that might be the next, next thing to do it. Because, you know, we all know the point, like, I mean, we're big on those, we, um, we think of the body, you know, the, you know, the, you know, the, uh, you know, the, uh, but, you know, we might, we, we, they're not as common, but where they're at. So I think that's, that's important. And I think the, uh, communities, so we have, there's a lot of fun to it. We can see them, but, yes. Um, so, um, you know, putting stuff out, older and younger, that's not, I'm going to talk to it. A lot of the work that we're doing, you know, the, you know, the, uh, it's going to be a little, uh, it's a lot of, uh, um, uh, so.
Alright. Great. Thank you, Deb. Bobby?
I was working down on the dog park and, um,
Uh, yeah, sure, me. I'll get that up on the screen on the shared so people at home uh, can look at this as well. Give me just one second. Nope, I gotta do it this way. Alright, I think, I'm hoping people at home can see the, uh, oh, we can't see that. My goodness. Um, hoping people can see this at home. I'm going to move this off the screen, uh, for a minute. I'm going to zoom away and alright. Hope too far. With the cause, community dog park rules and regulations, all dogs must be licensed, vaccinated and healthy. Uh, dogs showing aggression towards people are the dogs not allowed in the park. Dogs must be at least four months old to enter the dog park. Dogs in heat are not allowed in the dog park. Dogs must be leashed when entering or leaving the dog park. No person or persons can enter the dog park with more than two dogs. Handlers of the dogs must be sixteen years of age or older. Handlers are responsible for any injuries or damages caused by dog dogs under their control. Dogs must be in the view and under the control of the handler at all times. Dogs must be removed from the dog park at the first sign of aggression. Handlers must pick up any and dispose of their dogs' waste immediately. No, that's fine, that's fine. No digging is allowed. Owners must fill in any holes dug by their dogs. Excessive barking is not allowed. Uh, no food or smoking is allowed in or at the dog park. All incidents, injuries or inappropriate conduct by dogs or people should be reported to the village office ASAP. Uh, the village, whose it falls may ban individual dogs or people from the dog park at any time for any reason. Dog owners must be respectful of other dogs and park users. Owners may bring water in a bowl for their dogs to use. And enforcement of the above rules, under the immediate supervision of the town animal control officer. Okay, alright. Um, I think it would be wise to run this through Andy and run this through our officers. Do you guys like see anything you were thinking right after that? Oh, you know, there's something I would want to change or adjust or anything you had concerns with? I don't mean to put you on the spot, but as, you know, people who are going to be responding to this, I think it would be helpful for you guys to, to be good with everything. Okay. Andy, what are your thoughts? Oh, I'm sorry. Uh, yeah.
One thing that I can say, you know, because you're, uh, we're, you know, you have two dogs or what? Um, if someone was twelve or twelve or thirteen, they have, you know, five or eleven, they're obligated. Um, so you have, that's, you know, I'm, um, I'm, um, so.
Okay.
But I haven't seen, you know, like, uh, accidental circumstances or someone coming and chasing over the park, you know? So, I don't even know what I can do.
Alright. Andy?
Uh, scroll down a little bit.
Sure, sure.
One that I picked up, and again, this is something that I'm sitting here saying here. It is the village may ban individual dogs or people from the park at any time for any reason. Strangely against the property. And if they, uh, you deserve to like ban people for violations, they
The blurb at the bottom.
Well, that's a classic one. Yeah.
Yeah, I like something about those.
Yeah. Yeah, well, that's more, that's more. They can say that. Oh, you know, no, no. No, I'm not saying I, it's all that don't, you're correct, and ultimately you want them to be insurable. True. That's the one.
And also, I think, um, that's more, that's more, I have, uh, um, they, uh, they're tired, they're, they're, uh, uh, we can think about, uh, the, uh, the, uh, uh, we can start there, it's a, it's a, it was, I think, start, I think. And we have, uh,
Okay, Mark?
I, I don't know, I don't know, I don't know, but, uh, I think the question made, my, my.
I was thinking that too. Yep. Yeah. Sounds good. Yeah. Okay. But no, this is, I mean, this is good because we're further in the discussion. So maybe uh, we can run this through all the channels that we can think of, pump in a final and a resolution for the February meeting. Okay. Well, it is a small area. It's over there, so I could. No, it's not a huge area yet, but yes, I know what you're saying. I know a couple that have three.
Okay, no, that's true.
Yeah. I've seen a couple with three. Yeah, yeah.
But we tend to, uh, uh,
yeah.
We're not going to, uh, we, you know, sorry, two, sorry, three, I was, we, we, we.
So when you say, uh, uh, police, is that a local number? So, when you say, uh, uh, police, that's a local number, so it does.
There were lots of, was it sort of these kinds of, you know, going to law? If we think, before the law, it's standing towards you.
That's a good question.
If, my understanding is just, does not anticipate to be raised to work for law, simply dog park rules or regulations, including by the, that's a fair point, though, we have to look at how that kind of. We call it animal control.
Yeah.
Dog sales, but we, uh.
Yeah. It may also be good to see, you know, if we, if we like what Saratoga does theirs, maybe we can see if they have a law that was the inspiration to these rules, which gave the officers the necessary means to enforce things. Very good point, thank you.
There was something about, like, in children's, there was something about, um, we mentioned all regular, you know, regulations, when we talk about, uh, the parks and the dogs. So, maybe that's, uh.
That's the idea, yes.
Oh, that reminds me, I'm sorry, we are actually in the process of using, um, John, uh, who is the town attorney, but he's also the specialist, the specialist for law regarding dogs and like the greater capital region and beyond. He has taken a first crack at looking at our, our, our dog laws. So, we're kind of in the initial process of, we need to review these, and I, I've tried, been trying to set up a, a, a time to meet with him uh, and with our, our dog board, and so we can talk through things, they have less things, so maybe this gets built into that law. Oh, that's, I'm really glad you guys came up with that and connected that. Thank you.
Make sure, uh, we, we have, uh, the dog, and then, uh, any, that, uh, and like, uh, the sway on the dogs. Uh, to, you know, you have, you have, sure, that. And, uh, that, uh, that, uh. I, I don't think we're, uh.
The good, that's another good. Yeah. 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 That's half of them, not Saratoga, half of them, thank you. Yeah.
So, keep, uh. Okay, maybe you guys, uh, try to, some of the books that we want to, uh, the world, the, that's me. Well, that's a good one, actually.
All right. Awesome. Uh, anything else? All right, let's head on to old business. Uh, the first thing, we have been regularly tabling, but now we have a meeting set up for about a week and a half. Uh, in about a week and a half to make our discussions and start talking about what our changes are gonna be um, regarding the transfer station. So, even though this is in the whole business, I'd, uh, like a motion to table this until February meeting. Motion from Bobby, do I have a second? All right, any further discussion or questions on this? All right, uh, motion is to table, all in favor? Opposed or extensions? All right, carries. And we just discussed dog park rules and regulations. I don't think we need to table this right now because we're just gonna keep working on this, Andy, is that correct? All right, so.
Well, like, certainly, my thought would be, I have rules in place before it's open, otherwise, it's, um, so. Despite that, that, it looks like a, you know, on, right? They die, because for.
All right. All right, in that case, oh, there's the transfer station appearing on the screen randomly. Okay. Uh, new business, discussion regarding ARPA funds. I feel like we've discussed this. Is there anything else you guys wanna bring up about this? All right. Um, yes, Denise.
Do we wanna set a time for, you know, like, a workshop on this? Um, is there any kind of interest to set any kind of meeting to start going over this? I mean, there's no rush, but to start hashing out ideas or?
Well. If we advertise now that the February meeting would open with the workshop, is that, do we feel comfortable moving that fast? I mean, it, it does certainly motivate us. Just for ARPA? Andy, what's the noticing requirements for some, for a workshop like this? So, we could, if we wanted to, at the regular February meeting, notice for a week from now, we would not, we're gonna have a workshop, we're gonna hear from people. If we wanted to do that approach.
Right, we have to, so it's like, maybe, in a certain timeframe, around that facility, if you're gonna do something like that. Like, that, just, you've got, that, probably, more than we know, because, uh, the problem, like, that, that, I mean, so, I, I, you said, there's still time for, you know, it's, that's, you know, getting some ideas, you know?
I think if we know it when they come in, or when we, you know, put out the information here, things we're thinking of. Perfect, thank you. Thank you. I think we'd need to keep up communication on that. And there's no shame in comparing notes, but it's still gonna be up to you guys to decide, you know, how many of the computers for village you're gonna buy from us, that's, you know, up to us. You know? Yeah. Yeah. Yes.
There's no creative rules for these projects. But you have to decide through the whole, get as much guidance as you can, once you spend the money. There's, and I think you say that this is very, but there is record keeping reporting requirements when you use the funds. And then the treasury department can do a subtle follow-up. And if in their opinion, it's like you're record keeping and just the beginning, we use the funds, they determine that because of the corporate use. You got to reinvest. And this is how we're talking about, which is significant amount, so. Moving carefully, um, a lot of thoughts, it's I think you're correct.
Man?
Yeah, Denise, please.
I will actually definitely be attending the next meeting because everything is garbled on my end. I know there's a lot of input from the trustees that I can tell is really good. Um, so if, if, you know, if they want to even come into the office and start a conversation, you know, that and that method, or have the workshop, it's not anything that does need to be done, you know, imminently. But it would be a good budgeting tool to know what we're looking at for the next year or two, to know what route we might want to be traveling. So it's just a thought, it doesn't need to happen soon, but I mean, everybody's ideas are good, and if they could all compile them, and then the board make their decision, we would have a better idea of where we're gonna be heading down the road, that's all.
Yeah, and just to reiterate that, um, we have, it's so weird because the villages fiscal year works differently than so many of the others, but we actually have the advantage of being able to have these discussions now in the same time that we're getting the next budget ready. And we don't want to introduce those at the April meeting.
Yes.
So this, this is the right time to start making discussions and making plans, so ideally, if we can maybe have our, our targets and our sites probably around February, maybe make some official decisions in March, that helps the budgeting. If, yeah, yeah. All right. Yeah. Thank you, Denise.
Thank you.
All right, um. We don't need to, uh. We just one minute to get the next screen up and ready for us. I don't, do we, we don't need to table anything on that, right? Great. Uh, so I'm gonna bring up the copy machine charts. Uh, I'm gonna move the zoom screen over back to here. And I will zoom in on this, apologies on not getting this out to the trustees sooner. Um, this was something that we've been working on a lot, the, uh, the office has been working a lot on this. Um, and we had some questions and Andy was super helpful today on our procurement policy. We have two specific quotes that we're bringing, we've received more, but there's really two that we're focused on for copy machines. Both of them are state contracts, um, and the two machines, and I will show you the, the direct quotes, but this is just a quick overview. Uh, the Sharp Copy Machine, and both of them have two paper trays and, and the cabinet. Uh, and we're estimating, you know, twelve hundred copies a month, I totally misspelled that, sorry. Uh, each of them will have the additional finisher. And the finisher is important because the finisher will do automatic stapling and automatic folding, which especially when it comes to, you know, getting letters out the mail, especially large ones, water bills, it's gonna be incredible. Um, the Sharp machine here has a base cost of thirty seven ninety-two, the external finisher uh, of thirteen eighty-two, and the annual service cost of one eighty. Um, brings it to fifty-three, fifty-four, and the annual service cost, it says it'll be annually, we'll pay it now and we'll have to budget for that. Denise, you can't see this on your screen, can you? I don't think I'm sharing this, just one second. All right, there, sorry.
Can't see it, oh, there, I can now.
All right, my apologies. Uh, so this is the Sharp machine, the second machine that we're looking at. Sorry about, oh, that's the wrong button, thanks. Oh, all these are different, okay. Is the Rico, uh, copy machine, sorry. Um, this is through Repeat Business, this was one of the people, we've worked with them regularly, this is one that we almost went with the mail, it was a different one. Um, the Rico IM twenty-five hundred, uh, similar, does similar, same things that we needed to do. Uh, the base cost is actually a little bit lower, twenty-eight, seven, uh, the external finisher is fourteen, fourteen. Annual service cost is a little bit higher, but the total cost for the first year would be forty-four ninety-seven, uh, compared to the fifty-three, fifty-four. And the preference of the village office staff is the Rico. Um, I agree, not only just because we have a Rico, but I've actually used a similar machine at the school because over the past like six years, they've been through several different Ricos uh, with upgrades, and I know this one, and it's very similar in layout to the one we have, but it also has a lot of up-to-date features, it's easier to use. Um, the actual specific bids, um, that we have are right here. Hate the fact that it wants me to zoom that way. There, there were, well, there was one or two other vendors that you guys checked out, but it just wasn't hitting what we needed it to do, so that's why we're not bringing those to you, but you know, we had two others we would line up to get. Yep. Uh, annual service costs. We'll go back to that. And again, if, you know, they come out, general things are covered, but if there's like a need to park or something else, that would obviously be a lot of expense. I wouldn't go that far. Yeah. Yeah. Um, so those, you guys have any other questions or one more detail on any of these? We, we talked about, or we, we looked into the possibility of leasing versus purchasing, and it sounded like everyone in the office agreed purchasing was the better way to go. It's better long-term because ideally we'll be saving money and just going to lease, um, but. No, no, that's just, that's just estimated, yeah. Nope, it's, we purchased it, it's ours. Many copies. Yep. Yep. Denise, anything you want to add?
Uh, no, no, I think you've done, those are the costs, and we've been very happy with Repeat, they've been in-house for a bit. Um, but we wanted to see what the other competitors have to, had to um, offer, and we'd like the Rico we've had. Up until now, it's been good, but it's, it's certainly served its purpose over the last, I can't even tell you how many years. So, yeah. I like the Rico.
So, uh, if, if the board is okay with it, we would look for a motion uh, to purchase the Rico IM twenty-five hundred for Repeat Business. As per the state contracts. All right, thank you, Bobby. And Bobby, any further discussions? Yeah, the comparison to. Uh, all right, any further discussion? All right, all in favor? I oppose or extensions? We have three happy office ladies. Thank you.
Yes, you do.
And a happy Mark too, I'm sure. All right. All right, um, so we, I talked about this earlier, the Office of Temperance and Disability Assistance, Slow Income Household Water Assistance Program, let me get that up, um. I think, oh, that's a little bit zoomed out. That's a little bit offside. Nope, I don't think this is the right one, is it? No, this is to be an outfit. Um, it'd be ahead out here, just want to. So Andy, do you want to just speak briefly? I know you looked into this, or Marie, either one, I know you guys looked into this. So we're basically looking for a motion to approve, I think it would be Marie, to, uh. And it would be a vendor type, uh. So I'm just looking for that motion. All right, Bobby and Bobby, further discussion? All there, Rob, I'm seeing, great, it's happening. Any opposed or extensions? All right, Carriest, thank you, thank you, Andy. Uh, who's it, River Greenway North Trailhead Ranch, this was a thing I brought up by accident uh, earlier, you get that back up here. So they have, uh, we put it out for bid originally. Um, no bids came back, or no bid on it, so we're going to try it again with a simpler, uh, version. Uh, the timeline, as I mentioned before, would be, um, to get it back in on February first, twenty-twenty-two. Have the bid opening, give some time to review documents and get their official recommendations forward with the possibility of us moving on in the February. Anything else you guys want to add to this? Okay. All right, so this is a pretty simple one, we're just looking for a motion to advertise for bids, uh, with revised bid package. Thank you, guys. Further discussion? Uh, all in favor? Oppose or extensions? All right, thank you, Motion Carriest. Um, Spectrum Internet Installation, I gave you the quick run-through before, I'm just looking for a motion to authorize the mayor to sign the agreement with Spectrum Internet, uh, for internet phone and a static IP address to be installed at thirteen, let's throw it. Thanks, Bobby. Thank you, Bobby. Uh, any further discussions? All in favor? Oppose or extensions? Carriest, you now have two happy water operators. And we have a resolution delegating to the village treasurer the power to authorize the sale and issuance of not to exceed one hundred sixty-three thousand, three hundred eighty-four dollars revenue anticipation notes in anticipation of receipt of revenue from water bills. Uh, while I get that up there, Denise, do you want to say anything specific or Andy about this?
Hello, hello, hi, um, just because, um, we didn't get to re-levee the water outside of the water inside bills this year, and of course, this is always our normal cash crunch period of the year. Uh, in anticipation of the county making us whole in two thousand twenty-three. Actually, now we are able to borrow money to help our cash flow and then just pay it back when we receive the money from Restler County. We will be able to, the governor didn't allow us to re-levee the water uh, bills from this past year in June or next year we can, so we will be able to, to do this year and the last year. So we can recoup those funds and be recouped in March of twenty-three and thereby helping our cash flow now.
Did you hear that, Denise?
I can't, what was the question?
One more time, Kevin. The, can, can, um, that state program that we talked about before, can they use those funds to pay for that?
I can't really hear the discussion, but I'm, I'm assuming that by that program, that anyone that could apply and be accepted, their bill would be resolved before any kind of re-levee. This would just be at the final end of anything that was not paid. Like we would normally do, would be re-levee into the, um, the June property taxes of the village.
Okay, uh, so we have up here, uh, resolution uh, delegating the village treasurer, I've read that before, that very long title, uh, not to exceed one hundred sixty-three thousand, sixty-nine-four dollar revenue of, uh, revenue anticipation notes, so be resolved by the Board of Trustees, the village was called Rensselaar County, New York as follows. Um, section one, the power to authorize the sale and issuance of not to exceed one hundred sixty-three thousand, six hundred eighty-four dollars revenue anticipation notes of the village with the bald rents of County New York, including renewals thereof, in anticipation of the receipt of revenues from water bills is hereby delegated to the treasurer, chief fiscal officer. Such notes shall be of such terms, form, and contents, and shall be sold in such manner as may be determined by said treasurer pursuant to the provisions of local finance law and section two of the resolution, shall take effect immediately. So I'm looking for someone to introduce the resolution. All right, I need a second. All right, thank you, Bobby. Do you have any further questions, discussions?
And just to clarify, that would be for what we would normally have done this past June, but we couldn't because of the pandemic, it would be any unpaid water bills, we did, we did re-levee those, the sewer and the solid waste. We were not able to do the water. So it'd be any unpaid water bills that were from the previous year, which would be, uh, I think it's gonna be, you know, I'm trying to go back. It would be anything from the past fiscal year that would normally be, uh, re-levee, that couldn't be re-levee this past June. So it would normally be, already have been done, but because of the pandemic, it was not able to be done. So it's not really, you know, anything that would be out of the normal. We would already be receiving this, but because of the situation, we're not this year. So we'll just pay it back when we get the money back from the county.
All right.
From what I can hear, that sounds totally accurate, yes.
All right, any further questions? Roll call both, please. Um, yes. Outstanding. All right, thank you. Uh, let me switch the share, bear with me here. Okay. And trustees, is there anything else you want to bring up, uh, for business? Okay, uh, if that is the case, let me get this up here as normal. I'm looking for a motion to enter executive session to receive advice from council and to discuss a personnel matter with no business to be conducted at the conclusion of executive session. Thank you. Thank you, further discussion? All in favor? Closer sections? Okay, we are now adjourned to executive session at seven forty-six PM. Uh, there will be no business afterwards, so I will close down the Zoom, I will stop recording. Thank you to all who joined us, uh, and put up with the microphone. That's been good. Thank you all, thank you, Denise.
Thank you.